To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will begin with reports of the borough officers. Do we have any updates from our financial advisor?
Tax money's starting to come in. We got notified that today. We will be filing our ARPA finalization report at the end of the month to the federal government. Yeah, we have committed funds and projects and we have to report on what they are. They all had to be committed, which all of ours are, or completed, which all, some of them are. And we have, I believe, the 2027 complete them out. But we will be filing those reports.
Any questions regarding the financial advisor's report? Next is the police piece report.
Other written report, Madam President, for the council meeting.
Any questions? Fire chief. Okay, thank you. Engineers report?
Likewise, I'll have a written report for the regular council meeting. Just a couple of things update. The improvements on the park are right out front here are starting to shape up, as you can see. The row program scope, we're going to start developing that soon. So I hope to come to council in the April meeting, looking for the approval of that scope so we can start soliciting bids. And then the sewer cleaning contract that was just recently approved, the award letter did go out to ADU Services.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Solicitors report.
Thank you, Madam President. A two magistrate report on the first involves the school district's middle school project. The, the, back at the settlement of this matter and then subsequently the approvals by council were that this project was approved subject to third-party approvals, one of which was PennDOT, which we've talked ad nauseam about over these last couple of years. The school district has obtained their PennDOT permit for the project. So that was the last of the third-party approvals that was, that was needed. So with that, we have the land development agreement in place, the public improvement security agreement in place, and the stormwater best management, management agreement in place. At this point, we are able to execute the land development plans themselves and the school district may file those with their recorder of deeds. And they would also now need to fund the public improvement security agreement, which my understanding is they have established a fund of 12 million plus at TD Bank in the name of the borough. And then they also need to fund the professionals escrow, the professionals escrow. You know, basically they have to give us a check for about $550,000 to cover all the legal costs, all the engineering costs that have been incurred thus far. That, that's not the amount that's been incurred thus far. That, that's the estimate for what perhaps it would be over the whole course of the project, going back to the time of the settlement of this. And, and also with that, we would charge the building permit fee. I've reported previously, Madam President, that we, my recommendation is that we make an alteration to our fee structure. If, if, and we're not unlike almost every municipality, that basically our, our permit fee for this type of commercial project would be 4% of the construction costs. And, you know, we, we rarely, if ever, have projects that run more than, you know, $5 million. And, and this project is, the construction value is anywhere from about $70 million to $105 million, depending on what the latest information is. So if we were to apply our current building permit fee, it would, we, we would come up with a, a permit fee of somewhere at least $3 million, which is, is not, would not be a reasonable fee for us to charge. We wouldn't be able to justify that. You know, our inspectors, Mr. Gold, Mr. Lynn, and even capturing all of the time that all of our staff spent on this, we wouldn't be able to justify that amount. So the recommendation is that we keep with that 4% up to a certain amount and then tier it down, drop down to 2%, 1%, a quarter percent, you know, as you, you go up the scale. And that would reduce the fee that comes to us and it would be fair both to the borough and to the school district. We do keep in mind that this building permit fee is being paid by the school district, which gets its money from taxpayers and, or borrows the money, which is paid by the taxpayers. So we, we're cognizant of that. So I will have, and, and we've had extensive discussions with Mr. Kelly, Madam President, Mr. and the mayor and Mr. McCosey to try to kick around ideas about where that structure should land. I have looked at about 10 or 12 other municipalities, all the municipalities that are adjacent to the school district as well as similarly sized burrows. And I think that our proposal will be eminently reasonable. So that'll be circulated around. I'll ask the honorability circulate that around to, to council to take a look at. And it would be proposed for council's adoption at the, at the March meeting. And then the second matter that we've been working on, I know Mr. McCosey will report on it more in his manager's report, is, as he indicated, the ARPA funds have been allocated or encumbered, as the word is. But some of them, we, we did have, if you recall, a grant program for nonprofit organizations. Many took advantage of it. Some nonprofits did not take advantage of it previously. We've, we've, we've heard from, you know, some nonprofits regarding, hey, is there availability still of any monies? We're, we're looking at that to make sure that we are checking all our boxes with ARPA, both from our financial advisor with Mr. McCosey. But we do think that there is room for money that has been allocated that we can still use for these nonprofit grants. So like I said, Mr. McCose probably explained a little bit better, but we'll, we'll ask council's approval to open up, we'll call it round two, of those, those nonprofit giving preference. The recommendation is to give preference to any of the nonprofits, qualifying nonprofits, that did not apply for or receive funding in the first round. And to, to, to fund those and then open it up, you know, for any of the other nonprofits. And we've asked, as, as, as council will recall, it's not just sort of a, hey, send us an application and we'll, we, we'll just give you money, you know, any amount. It was tied into, you know, show us some of your financial statements that shows that there was a drop in revenue from the 2019 pre-COVID year to the post-COVID years. So we, we were able to take a look at that and based upon the whole pool of applicants, assign a, you know, a percentage based on what those nonprofits had lost. So we would recommend doing the same thing here, once again, because the federal government wants us to have some structure or reason behind the amount of the grant. And then also we're cognizant of, you know, that some of these revenue losses didn't stop in 2020 or 21. Some nonprofits in town have continued to experience revenue losses, perhaps not as badly as 2020 or 21, but, you know, nonetheless, COVID has had a lasting effect on certain nonprofit areas. So like I said, I, I might have stolen all of his wind, but I know Mr. McCose will talk about this in his report, but we would announce, ask council's authorization to, to do that round two nonprofit grant program at the March meeting. And that's all I have at this point in time.
Any questions for Mr. McLean? Community development and code enforcement.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll have a written report for the council meeting, but I am pleased to announce we have two new businesses coming to town. At 570 at the Clifton Commons on East Baltimore Avenue, we have a nail salon coming in. And at 713 East Baltimore, at the Cliff Nice Plaza, we have Bartleton Code Factors replacing the big lots.
Wow.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Gold? Managers report.
I have a couple of things this evening. If I could talk about the wall JP just spoke about outside here, there's a wall being built. That's curvature, going to be a brick wall. We're going to call it like, well, I don't want to call it. I want to have the mayor and the president council want to appoint a committee in the community. Some of the communities have them. Springfield has one, Prospect Park has one, Concord has one. And the committee basically comes up with, we believe, three of the criteria. You have your emergency services, it's always providing great service to the community, dedicated volunteers or, or career. You also have the public servants and the community leaders. Then you have, in this town, sports. So we're looking to gather that committee together to set up criteria. And that criteria would then dictate that each year, you know, we call Founder's Day, call it whatever you want, Hero Day. You have a ceremony, you bring that, those families whose loved ones are recognized and they could be there. I don't want to call it memorial because I don't believe in recognizing live people with a, say memorial to the major day. So this way, they would come with the family and there would be an installation of a plaque in honor of that person for the dedication that he did. It could go back to early 1800s, it could be the 1900s. We do some research, there's people, there's just names in this town, like any town, that have contributed to something that they deserve to be recognized for long future. In addition to that, I think we should put in a yearly, what are they called? Not tomb, I was going to say tombstone. You know, a dated box for 100 years or 50 years with the current, you know, the newsletter, what's happening, who the officers are, who the council are, who's the officers of the fire company. Put the box in the ground, put a date on it and say, you know, 2050, open it up. Or, you know, make it look like, who the hell was that solicitor?
Still be here in 2050.
Waiting for that to go back. So anyway, I think, yeah, I think we get a couple of people together. I think it'd be a great committee to serve on because I think there's a tremendous history. I've been in this town for four, five years now, but I lived here all my life and there's still names that just resonate throughout the community. So I think it's going to be a great thing. The wall's going to be finished, probably weighs like bricks per day, I think maybe two weeks. Then the gazebo's going and the sidewalk's going. It's really going to make it attractive on that corner. It's been sitting vacant. It's also, it originally serves a purpose that the water from the parking lot is actually being captured at that location to stop and, you know, help flooding downstream because, because of sheet flow off the parking lot. So it serves a purpose and it also serves a, you know, for community type thing to sit around or hopefully you can see some of the people sitting there. I told Chris it'll be a good stop on the way, way to work every day, she can stop in. That takes care of it. But the next one up is the pickleball court, which we've all talked about. And so that's on Glenwood Avenue. And we also have the upper field where we have a meeting with the residents of, in that area for their children. And anybody can show up at the meeting. And it's relative to the equipment manufacturer coming in that speak about parks' equipment. A lot of times people pick park equipment and then they find out that the children in the area really don't like it and it's not age appropriate. From an insurance and risk perspective, we got to make sure it's age appropriate. So there'll be two sets. When we laid it out with the original dirt, there'll be a set for the children under eight and there'll be a set for the children over eight. And a little sitting area for the moms or, or family members when they're there. And then the park will then have a walkway and it has a set of steps that goes out to Glenwood Avenue. And I need JP to talk about the pickleball courts because Mark could probably talk about it because he's playing pickleball. We'll let JP, the engineer, design it.
Well, what we've laid out here, what you see on the screen, to the right of these improvements would be where the highway shed is in that open field, which, which was designated as a future dog park. And we laid out a, a parking lot which holds at least 14 cars and then two pickleball courts. And then we left some room for stormwater design. So if this is acceptable to council, we're going to finish this plan. And where that stormwater control basin is, we're also going to work in an area for benches. So if you're waiting to play, you, there's a spot to sit. We show three light standards in the middle of this, which we feel that that's enough light for that area. And it really depends on, on council's decision whether or not there's going to be night play. But, you know, let's assume we can change, we can change the fixtures according to council's wish to get more light or less light. And then there's a, we're going to, we want to line that walkway up with the crosswalk, which is proposed with the Diamond Street Park to improve that staircase that's there now, which is fairly wide and very nice, but it's overgrown. But we want to improve that pedestrian cross there so that these two facilities, these two parks are, are connected. So fortunately, we were able to get some soil from the schools that's really changed this site to, to improve the, what we're proposing here. And then, of course, as everyone's aware, more so towards the left is the existing parking lot for the path field. So that's it in a nutshell. And if council's okay with this, we're going to, we're going to wrap this plan up with details. We need to have more details to this plan. Right now, it's laid out in the way we feel that it's going to fit best. And then we have to add the details, the cross segment for, the profiles for the paving, the line striping, the pedestrian crossing. The pedestrian crossing may require a mast arm also to slow traffic down and warn, warn vehicles that there's a pedestrian crossing, especially because of the curve there. Also, at the entrance to the parking lot, as you'll see on this plan, is a PICO pole, which would need to be relocated. But I, this is what we feel is the best fit for this area and we can get at least two regulation-sized pickleport, pickleball courts on that site with parking.
And for timeline, JP and I met today extensively on this. We're going to look to possibly do a, a co-stars, John, for this, sending, you know, an application for co-stars to try to get a good selection of some local contractors that we can possibly jump on this pretty quickly and get it, get it in for the springtime, get it moving. Our, our big advantage was we got that dirt.
Yes, that was a huge advantage, yeah.
We have the opportunity to do that and the playground, playground equipment. The gentleman is a co-stars vendor, so that, that saves a lot. And our local excavator is now a co-star. So hopefully we get that, that up and running.
Pavilion came from, from a co-stars vendor also.
Let's prove it.
Yes.
All right, so that takes care of pickleball. Any questions on the pickleball court?
JP, the park, the parking situation, that's not down by the path, right? That's above between the maintenance building and.
Correct.
Okay, so my question comes down to, in essence, from what I understand about pickleball courts, if you have one, you have no visitors. If you have two, you need five courts. They get busy real quick. People love that cave for some reason. But anyway, could theoretically, is, is the parking lot going to be paved?
Yes.
So that couldn't become a pickleball court in the future? I know, my question is, is there any room or is there any thought that adding on to that, to the pickleball courts? Would that be done or no?
Well, I mean, technically, I guess it could be done. I mean, you'd have to change the striping and the fencing and things like that onto the existing paving. The existing paving mix is different for the pickleball court than you would use for a parking lot. So some of the, the paving feature would have to change. Although the, there is parking also down by the, you know what I mean, further down Glenwood, which is not far. I mean, literally maybe 50 feet away. So I, I think between the two parking spots, we have enough for the two. But I understand what you're saying. They become very, very popular and do we build enough? I, I mean, either we cross that bridge when we get to it and we see how this works out or.
I can tell you, we have, we need parking there. I don't want people parking, I'm sure the chief agrees, that's a bad street to be parking on, you know, for.
Oh, oh, on the curb line, correct.
On Glenwood Avenue. So if it would be popular, we also could examine whether the dog park is feasible or not. That's why we left it out.
Yes.
At this point, one is money, which is always a factor. And the second is, we have to be able to get somebody in there handicapped. And the only way to do that, we elevated the dirt and we can't get a handicap coming in on the lower end. And JP was able to work in the two handicap spots that they, they roll right into the, into the court.
Right.
So that would be a little bit of a challenge to have it move over. We could do it, but top, top graphically, there's some issues there for drainage. We've got, you know, too much impervious springs.
More stormwater.
More stormwater, things like that. I think we try it and we see what happens. I mean, I think the biggest difficulty is going to be is we have to try to regulate who's on there and we'll be meeting with the staff here on how, who gets on there, how to get on there, how long they stay on there. You know, I'm not a pickleball guy.
There's a ton of rules in place I can give them to you of, and just like on John's note that, I mean, every town has one or building one. So like, yeah, it's popular, but, you know, we're going to have our own. And Springfield has, I think, four courts, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of courts around for a lot of different people that play. But there is certain rules and it's called a set, you play two games and then you, you get off. Or you, you can play a, a set where, so four people play. Whoever wins the game, those two win and then the next two step up. So, you know, you're going to have eight people playing probably all the time because there's two courts, four in a court.
And I do have to say that here, we don't have a recreation department. So we're not looking to become the pickleball court dynasty. I mean, this is for our residents. I don't, I don't need a, a fight because you didn't get off the court and you didn't do this. So we have to, that, someone's going to have to figure all that out. And it's not going to be like.
Well, I'm, I'm playing at Springfield's Y and there's probably a fight every single night.
Well, I won't be involved in it.
So I mean, I don't, I don't know how you stop all that.
Well, I did, my point is I don't need five courts. I think we have the two.
Two is, two is good.
Settle in for that, let's see where it's at money-wise and, you know, hopefully get it in there and get it's up and running.
It's a very, very nice start.
Yeah, I think it'll be all right for now. Next up is the, the front is, I, I put up an energy, but I've been looking at the energy. It's, you know, I'm moving layers through the borough on different things. My topic this year was looking at the energy cost for the borough. Right now, so people know, we pay for the streetlights. Our streetlights were turned over right before COVID. The borough bought old streetlights, it was pre me, from Upper Arby Township off of a bid. And they got them for like five hours. They were our old test lights for LEDs in the Westboro Park section. So they received a really good deal on them. They've been put in, the problem is PICO did not allow the program to continue. Used to be able to get some good dollars for the trade-off. COVID hit and they never opened up the programs. We never really received the full benefit of the LEDs. So I had a energy company come in. There's many energy companies out there I've dealt with when I was at the county, John's dealt with them. This particular energy company gets his fees from recommending on the energy side, not us paying him consulting fees or he, he gets money every time we save money. So I had him look over our bills to make sure, first of all, that we're in the right, right rate payers. So we changed one of the rate payers, meaning that we all have a residential account on a, the ball field. You know, a lot of times the municipalities, the boys' club put the lights in and they call PICO. In the old days, the guy probably worked for PICO, they put the pole up. Then they found out there's not a meter on it, they put the meter on it, it goes on the residential, we're paying the wrong rate. So our rates, this proposal is, our rates are now in schedule. We went out the bid for five companies to give us a proposal on what the rates are. We have different years in, in there and you see 12 months, 24, 36 and 48 months. Smartest Energy came in, you, you can see where PICO's at. Go back, John, if you can, the one before. PICO's sitting at, on our accounts now, we're lined up for 0.0919. Costs us about $48,000 a year. We come over to the right, our proposed 12-month price. We come over to the right, our proposed 12-month price, it would cost us another $1,685. So if we go down, the best bid came in, next page, John. Next bid came in, is Smartest Energy at the 89. 4094 greater than our output over here. It's 08555 would be the 48-month rate. I don't like locking in too far. I think two years is a good enough time. Let's see where the energy is. Energy is, you know, a commodity. It moves a lot. Locking in, sometimes the rates do come down, although it's a council call on this. So I'm going to leave it out there. If anybody wants to kick back an email to me, or I'm going to have Cindy look at it as well, John, at the contract side. But I think we should, you know, lock it as something. I definitely think we should get away from PICO because it's close to this big money. And we'll just leave it out there and I'll come back with a recommendation in March. I mean, there is some significant savings on that. If you look at the, I think it's $2,000 a month, I think, something like that. We got it at a 48-month price. We'd save 2,700 hours. If you go to the two-year mark, we save 661 a year. If you do, it's 1,200, it'd be still 2,400 if we stay two and then jump up. I don't think it's ever going to go down, but I do think it goes up. But, I mean, sometimes when you shop it out there, they're pretty close to what they are. So I'll take anybody's recommendation. I just wanted to talk to Cindy and see what our, I don't have, I didn't get a chance to get to Cindy for our pre, you know, what was our five-year average type of thing? I'd like to look at that. I'll be coming back with your recommendation.
Oh, yeah. I do this for my house, too. I go to other energy companies to get it. Now, I know there's some that do fix and I usually go like 12 months or 24 months. And there's no cancellation fee. You can cancel and change anytime you want, but that has to be in the agreement. So even if you go 48 and the company, you know, Smart Energy says, okay, you know, you can cancel it, no loss, and change it, you can change it. Because I do this all the time with my, trying to look for the two guys want. And right now, for the house it was, PICO was cheaper than the one I had, so I just looked for PICO for now. But I can change it back and go to another company whenever I want to. I don't know what the...
Yeah, same way. Just allowed to see what you, I asked him to look at it, give me some prices. I got them late today. We've been going back and forth all week. I just haven't really had a chance to really, really deep dive into it with Cindy. That'll be coming to you. I'd ask you for anything, right? And the other one is the grants program. So I want to bring up something here. So if you recall back in 2023, we opened up the grant program. There were some parameters. I just want to go over those, what we'll be looking at. Basically, there's general comparisons between nonprofits and compared to for-profits. So in order to be eligible for this, you need to meet one of these criterias, what their business purpose is, the resources to the community and public contribution, or tax status, and the financial reporting. So the financial reporting is important to us. Like John said, we got to have some kind of accountability. So some people did not qualify last time because they didn't have their tax records done or for whatever reason, they did not do it. But that is a requirement for the submission. Excellent. We allocate, we're going to allot $100,000 in nonprofit sustainability in the community. They want to direct the funding. It's what council's orders were to me, and our program was, financial by allocate the 100 to nonprofits for loss of revenue during the period. This one would be during a period from January 2020 through January 1 of '25, excluding any ARPA allotments already previous given. So my idea there is you would have, you know, if you had 100,000, you lost 100,000 and we gave you 50, the 50 is still there. You'd be eligible for the 50 side of it. It would include, your ARPA contribution would include in your revenue source for the year that you received it. Eligible applicants must demonstrate the need to maintain and support infrastructure repairs or debt relief from the post pandemic surefalls. Application funds must have certified estimates or financial statements with applications. We're looking for an estimate for a roof or a financial statement saying our delta for paying our fees or our taxes, or whatever it is, is shortfall. Nonprofits, we believe this is the statement that we use to be able to qualify for the ARPA. Talks about the, you know, so those that are 501(c)(3) is our 501(c)(19) tax exempt organizations defined by the U.S. Treasury. And there's paperwork that needs to be on the application for that. And, next one. The impacted are, you know, you can look at the application, be able to identify that we're impacted by the pandemic measures to respond in several ways. And we looked at decreased revenue, donations, dues, fees, financial insecurity, increased costs, uncompensated increases in services, need, capacity to weather financial hardship and challenges covering payroll, rent, mortgage, or other operating costs. And we don't want to know what your criteria of organization is and come back and factor structure with an address to the borough. It has to have a structural address to the borough. In other words, when I looked up who the 501(c)(3) is where, we had like the string band of, you know, someplace, and it's on Cherry Street. But that's happened to be the 501(c)(3) is a legitimate 501(c)(3), but the treasurer happened to live on Cherry Street. So we had to delete all those. So you need to have a physical building structure in the borough that you're operating, meaning own it in the borough. And that was one of the criterias as well. You have to put the application into the borough. We're going to talk about the dates on that when we do it next week. Go ahead. So the application, we made it pretty simple form. It was the name of the organization, the structure, the president, the chairman, et cetera, the officers. The corporate statement defined the officer requirements of who signs the grant. A lot of times, just the organization, you know, the treasurer's been signed it forever, but it's really the president and the secretary have to sign. Resolution authorized the officer to sign for a grant, amount of a loss exceeds the requested amount seeking. Well, the first part of that is, we're looking to, the membership is aware that you're applying for a grant. A lot of organizations, the top-level officers do it, and then the lower people, or not lower, the membership isn't aware of it. We want to make sure that everyone's aware of it. We want an application that you're getting, applying for the grant. And the amount of the law exceeds the requested amount seeking. So you can't have, I lost 25,000, I'm applying for 50. The meeting minutes attached with authorization grant application and the terms of the grant will be attached, the narrative expected of the use of grant funds, with basically one pager paragraph telling us what you're looking to use the funds for and attach any documentation. That was the rules. So this one here is a requirement, which is guaranteed use of funds as described in the application. The responsibility, the use of the expenses of organizations will not be audited by the borough or will require compliance and an internal control audit from a CPA. If this organization does not have a CPA, a certified audit or a 990 affidavit certifies the use of the grant funding by the organization. This shall certify that the funds were utilized properly by the close of business 24. Our letters will be going out April 30th after the tax season this year for the people that received it prior, certifying that 990 or a CPA that they use the funds in accordance with what they did so we can close the file. The purposes and expenditures of the grant must follow your internal controls and expenditures. So that's just the overview we had. Now, the award, our awards we did last time is the financial grants we evaluate based on the need percentage of the total nonprofit loss in the borough. Each qualified organization will receive a grant. So the total allocated funds budgeted in this grant is programmed as 100,000. The number of qualified organizations eligible will be determined by the amounts that they award. You remember what the solicitor said, those who had it first will be set aside. The anyone who has not had one will go first round and then we'll leave the other ones in for the balance of the dollars. And we have a May 1 deadline as well as awards to be announced June 1. So April, after the council meeting, we'll put that out. You do the simple application and then before the award, you have to file all the other documents. This is an example of what we did. So if organizations submit a total loss equal, if everybody's loss came up to $730,000, we would take that and use the $100,000 against the percentage. In this case, organization number one had a $100,000 loss. Their grant ended up being $13,633 because that's the percentage, 13% of the total amount that they, 13.6% of the total amount. Cindy and I worked this out. We think it's the most fair way to do. It's equitable to everybody's impact, depending on how big the organization or how small the organization is, and everybody was able to get a grant out of that. Everyone that I spoke to that we interviewed with, or intervened with after a fact was pleased with that amount because it kind of was relative to the size of what they lost. It didn't have the little guy getting the most or the big guy getting the most. So that's how it worked out. I'll have to change that formula a little bit to meet the criteria the council wants on the, anyone first and second that did not receive the first round is feeling the impact now at a greater than the beginning. I think that's it, John. If council has any questions on that, we want to answer.
I just make one note, and I know...
I expect you would. Go ahead.
Not to overlord the thing.
I was a little nervous right there.
No, no, no. And Tom and I laughed at it, or I laughed at Tom. When we say a 501(c) organization, not all nonprofits qualifies 501(c). That's sort of the reference that you make for a nonprofit is a 501(c). But, you know, if they're a Pennsylvania nonprofit organization, I believe they qualify. You don't have to be a 501(c). 501(c) is a certain, it's the gold standard in terms of nonprofits, but you have to, you know, some of our nonprofits wouldn't qualify as 501(c)s because of the type of mission that they have. You know, 501(c)s are all different educational, you know, they're all do-gooder, but, you know, some very specified things under the federal tax code. So for instance, you know, you can have a nonprofit that here files a Form 990. That's their equivalent to a 1040 for a nonprofit. They don't pay, a nonprofit doesn't pay federal taxes, but they report their income to the federal government. So just to tweak that in case somebody, you know, we give a grant and somebody says, well, they're not a 501(c)(3). Yeah, well, they may not, you know, even the best may not qualify.
Yeah, right. They were all, as an example, all that went to Cindy and John, who's, you know, that's their realm to tell me whether they qualify, they don't qualify. Maybe that's why some people didn't apply. I don't know. You know, they looked at it and we don't meet that criteria. Any other questions on it? So I'll be bringing something to council for the 18th. We really, we have a resolution approved, John. We just have to change the one stipulation at the first. If you didn't have it the first, the second, how the application's going to work. No change in resolution, just approval of the process, I guess. I think that's it. That's all. I do have one other thing. Put the grants up. I'm sorry. So what we hand out today in your package is, I thought it was important to let you know where we're at with two quick items. All our grants that we've been working on for the borough and then also our capital borrowing that we did in 2022, '23. So under our grant administration, it's, we have the grant, if you remember, we hired a grant firm and then we have one person working Harrisburg for us on grants, which has been beneficial. We also have three women that work with us daily on filing and meeting the deadlines and entering into data. So the first grant is the DDCVI Economic Development Grant was for 2025 from Senator Kearney. Helped us out with this. It's Glenwood Avenue Park Improvements, which we just spoke of. We received an $80,000 award and there's no match to that. A lot of times, these things come with matches. There's no match to that. We have a DCD Multimodal Grant 2024, North Springfield Road, State Route 2009. Carter Improvements Phase 2 awarded $200,000. Unsure about the match as need original application. We believe that that's been waived also. We haven't had confirmation yet on that. COVID-19 ARPA funding, which we just spoke of, was $703,186. Our report is due on that. That money's been expended, or I'm sorry, allocated. DEP 902 Recycling Grant for Clifton Heights. We repot trash cans. It was $15,988. The match on that was $1,0776. COVID-19 ARPA Small Water and Sewer 2022 was for West Madison Avenue Storm Sewer Replacement. We were awarded $425,000 and our match for that's $162,600. We are now in for another grant for that, for $500,000, I think it is, JP. And that also would come without a match. We have PennDOT 2023 Springfield Road Carter again, Phase 2 awarded $1,300,000 and a match of $390,000, which we are told that we're going to be able to have a waiver on as well. They're going to use the work that's already being done on the highway as a match for us. When that reason, that Phase 2, the $200,000 is a match to that Phase 2 project. So that brings the total for Springfield Road Carter for our improvements. That'll go from Baltimore Pike at the corner property where the house is. That's what the $200,000 was, to take the house down, put a parking lot there, and then we go straight up to the Upper Arby Line with new curved sidewalks and improvements. The next one up is Carter, a DCD Multi, again Springfield Road Carter Infrastructure Safety Upgrades was a $400,000 with no match on the Springfield Carter. Next one's DOJ Cops Hiring 2023. Were awarded $519,000, which is the largest in the state with a match of zero. A performance due report is due on that. We just filed that. And our financial report's due on 4/30. That, two officers are already hired. We just purchased the first police car for that. There's the LSA statewide grant, Clifton Heights Parking Advancement Plan. JP is currently finalizing that and that's a $30,000 with zero match. We have an LSA statewide 2023 Patrol Vehicle Purchases for $122,508. And the match on that was zero. We purchased one. We're going to be purchasing another one end of the year, Chief, or next year?
Probably in the fall, late fall.
That way we get our cars in balance with replacement costs. We have a PCCD LE New Recruitment Initiative, Recruitment Center for Law Enforcement. The award was $10,000 and the match was zero. That's already been released out to the officers that we hired recently. And we have a Delaware Housing, Delaware County Housing Demolition Grant for 32 Mill Street. That's a property that's been really a problem for us the last five years. We have an $80,000 demolition grant for that. So our total in grants to the borough of Clifton Heights is $5,585,000 and 682 cents. And the match is less than like 70,000. So we're really, we've been really successful. I think the grant program that we initiated has really paid off for us. And then on our March report for capital, 2022, we borrowed $726,226. Out of that fund, we have $500,895 left. So we still have some funds. A lot of that's been earmarked for some of the projects, pickleball, those kinds, Glenwood Avenue, some of the other improvements that we have out there ready to go. So appreciate it. Just to let everybody know where that money's coming in and going. Any questions on any of them? So I have the report.
So there's no additional questions. We can move on to council reports. Mr. Swan?
The only thing I have is one of the residents in my ward last week was saying that he went away for about a week or so and let, I don't know if it was you or the chief or what, that he was going to be away.
Oh, the vacation check. They're done online.
And he said, like, because he still has that automatic thing that notifies him, he said, half the time when he got the notification was one of the officers patrolling, checking on the house, and he was very, very vocal, so he wanted to...
That's a program that we've had for years and it's available on our website. Vacation check program, it's not uncommon for police departments. If you go online, register for the vacation check. Depending on our call volume and what we have going on, we make an attempt to check the residents at least once a day, every day.
Very happy with it, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Resnick?
Anything to report?
Mr. Fagioli?
Nothing.
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Braun?
Nothing.
Ms. Borelli?
Nothing to report.
So I'll, just a quick, I guess, consensus. I was curious. So it's March, so Easter's coming, so we're going to talk about the egg hunt soon. Some of our eggs are looking a little tired, so we might need to replace some of them. And I was kind of looking into the cost of that. We've had in years past, some of the littler kids get very upset when you try and take the eggs back. They don't care about the quarters. They want their eggs. And I was looking into, they have like pre-filled candy eggs or pre-filled with like the gumball machine toys and it's comparable... with like the gumball machine toys and it's comparable to what we would put out in quarters. I also noticed last year, the banks were very stingy and didn't want to give me quarters. So it took a while to accumulate and the costs for about 1,000 eggs and we usually put 700, 800 eggs out is comparable to what we spend on quarters. So I wanted to know everyone's thought process. I know we've been doing the quarters forever. If we switch it up, does anyone have any concerns about making that update?
Sounds like an executive decision to make.
Yeah. All right. Well, if nobody has any of that, and then.
The only concern would be if you get something that has like peanuts in it.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I, yeah, like, I mean, my daughter has like a peanut allergy. So now you have a kid that gets a candy that has a peanut in it and then they can't eat it and then they cry. So I think that the toy option would might be a little bit of a better idea just for allergies purposes.
Do we like that better? All right. No, I appreciate the feedback. And then the bunny's going to get a facelift too. So, so yeah, I thought that was all I had. I just wanted to kind of get a consensus of that because since we were going to have to, you know.
We pick a date.
Um, it's usually the Sunday before Easter, so the 13th of April.
Palm Sunday.
Yes, Palm Sunday. Yes.
I'm going to put the flyer up. That's.
Okay.
In the hour.
All right. So and also to reminder, Boys Club and Pal Bingo is March 22 at the today's child gym where they have where the boys scouts do their food drive. That's where the Bingo is going to be. So don't forget to get your tickets for.
Day and time. Do you have a day and time?
March 22.
Yeah. Is that a Saturday?
It's a Saturday. Yes.
Seven o'clock?
Seven. It starts, doors open at six, correct? Yeah. So. And that's all I have. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing really to report, just a couple of comments. I totally agree with the eggs. I mean, we're there. We've been doing it, I think, for the last five years, me and you. And they're they're literally crumbling in your hands. I think Lou was the one that originally got them probably 25 years ago. So, so it's it's definitely, we definitely have to replace that. The other thing that I thought was amazing, Big Lot was missing for a long time. I think it's excellent that we got Burlington Co. Factor. I mean, that was a staple on the opposite side of the town. So it's nice to see them come back. That's all I have. I will have a full report on the council meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
We have nothing else. We'll adjourn. Thank you. Turn off your mics.